I call to order the work session of the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors at 5:15. Our first item of business is the Washington County Local Option Levy. With our guests of honor.
Hi, I'm Tammy Wallen. I'm the Library Director for Hillsborough Public Library. And I'm here today on behalf of WCCLS, the library system. I'm here to share with you educational information about a proposed local option levy. I think we're getting a presentation up here. There we go. To share information about a proposed local option levy, Measure 34-345. As a public employee, I am subject to political restrictions under Oregon law, so I am sharing only neutral and non-advocacy information today. In this presentation, I'll be covering how public library service is delivered in Washington County and current funding. I'll also talk about what the proposed levy would fund, how much it would cost, and what would happen if the levy did not pass. Here in Washington County, library service is provided through a partnership between Washington County Cooperative Library Services, known as WCCLS, and nine cities and three nonprofit associations that operate local libraries. WCCLS is the primary source of funding for these local libraries and also provides central support services that efficiently link these independently operated libraries together, creating a countywide system that's available to an estimated $400,000. There are 16 full-service library locations in the county, from banks in the northwest corner of the county to Sherwood in the south. In addition, our digital library is available 24/7 at WCCLS.org. In fiscal year 2024-25, the local option levy represents 45% of WCCLS revenue, and the remaining 55% is a transfer from the county's general fund. The majority of WCCLS total funding is directed towards library funding allocations at 67%. The remaining 33% of WCCLS expenses is for the central services that link the libraries The levy would fund programs, resources, and materials that are designed to support student success with reading and learning. Some of the events and resources available to kids and teens include book clubs, the Oregon Battle of the Books events, Makerspaces, and STEAM programs for science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Libraries also offer resources for parents and caregivers, kindergarten readiness, test-prep tools, and free access to fast and reliable internet. Over 10,000 students participated in library programs designed to support reading, learning, and student access last year. WCCLS has issued 83,549 library cards to public school students since 2019. The levy would also fund the central services that efficiently link libraries together. Library services can use the shared online catalog to ac-- or, sorry, library users can use the shared online catalog to access over 1.5 million library items, preserving them for pickup at any of the 16 libraries across the county. WCCLS courier trucks delivered 2.5 million books and other items to libraries in fiscal 23-24. In addition, WCCLS provides online learning tools like job hunting resources, downloadable eBooks, and audiobooks, digital newspapers and magazines, as well as streaming video available 24/7 to library users. The levy would also fund open hours at 16 full-service public library locations in the county. Most libraries in the system are open at least six days a week and provide access to 1.5 million items in the shared collection across the system. Last year, there were over 2.4 million visits to the WCCLS libraries, and total checkouts exceeded 7.2 million. By borrowing items rather than purchasing them, library users saved $140 million last year. In addition to providing books and other materials, library buildings serve as cooling spaces for the community during extreme heat. Users do not need a library card to access public computers and Wi-Fi as well as study The levy would also fund children's reading events, including storytimes for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers. Some storytimes are offered in multiple languages, including Spanish and Chinese. All WCCLS libraries offer regular events and programs for children, as well as an annual summer reading program. Libraries also offer interactive play areas that promote learning and social interaction. In fiscal year 2023-24, WCCLS libraries hosted over 200,000 participants at 6,000 in-person events for kids and teens. If passed, Measure 34-345 would replace a 22-cent levy that is expiring in June of 2026. The proposed replacement levy would be a fixed rate of 37 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, running from July 2026 to June 2031. In 2026, typical homeowners with an assessed value, not market value, of $348,600 would pay an estimated total of $129 annually, or $10.75 monthly. The annual increase in cost for the typical homeowner over the current levy would be just over $54 a year, or $4.55 a month more than the current levy. If the levy did not pass, reductions in library service would occur. These reductions would include reduced open hours, fewer book purchases, fewer reading events, and a reduced level of services that link libraries together. Some examples of the services that would be reduced include fewer eBooks purchased, a less robust online library catalog, less frequent deliveries between libraries, and disrupted access to technology. Thank you for your engagement with this presentation about the proposed local library option levy. To learn more, please visit WCCLS.org/levy. And I am not happy to say any questions that you have about the library. I am, as I noted, limited in what I can say about the levy specifically, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you, Tammy. Any questions for Tammy? Anyone online?
So now, one to one, a little bit more than the one that's being replaced? Is that kind of what I heard, 54 more or whatever?
Correct. The current levy is 22 cents per thousand. The proposed replacement levy would be 37 cents.
And the library system doesn't have multiple levies that overlap and have different expiration dates? It's one levy.
Correct.
It expires, you hope to renew it?
Yep. This one expires in 2026, and that new one would run from 2026 to 2031, and that is the only library levy that supports the cities. Now, other cities and nonprofits have other streams of funding in addition to WCCLS funding, and so they have other-- I can't speak directly to those. I can only speak to Hillsborough. But this is the only countywide levy that we have.
I know you're not allowed to do advocacy, only provide information. Did you bring anybody who can provide advocacy?
Katie Ryan is a library board member.
There you go.
I'm Chair Bento. Yes, I am currently serving as Vice Chair of the Hillsborough Library Board, in addition to my role here. And so, yes, I am a staunch advocate of public libraries and also of this levy. As we saw in Tammy's presentation that was created by WCCLS, the libraries provide essential services to our community, and the levy provides essential funding for the library services. Similar to Hillsborough School District, the service area of Hillsborough Public Library is larger than the city of Hillsborough. So between WCCLS, other libraries, and Hillsborough Public Library, we are serving all of the families of HSD in that way. The other thing that I would love to add in addressing your question, Mark, is that this current levy that is going to be on the ballot is a replacement levy, but it is replacing a levy that was itself a renewal levy. So that five-year levy replaced another five-year levy. So they have not proposed any increase to the levy in 10 years. So it's not, you know, this has not been taken lightly in terms of, you know, deciding the amount to propose for this levy. So thank you, Tammy, for letting me step in as an advocate.
No question, but just a comment. With young kids, we frequent the library, and we are just huge advocates of WCCLS. I love that we can get books in Korean and puppets that we don't have, you know, maybe in some of our Hillsborough libraries, but we can always go to Beaverton or Tigerhead and get them, or have them, you know, shipped to a closer library. The ease of access and the ease of being able to return those materials to any Hillsborough library has been amazing. So just a huge fan of public libraries. So thank you for being here.
Glad to hear that. And I will use this opportunity, completely apart from the levy, to say that the Hillsborough Library, Brookwood, your neighbor over here, our children's area is undergoing a renovation right now. It's getting in new carpet and new paint, and the big deal is new shelving, which is all front-facing shelving. So those of you who work with pre-literate children who can't read the titles on a little tiny spine on an spine-out book, everything will now be turned face outward, so they'll have a much easier browsing experience and a much better opportunity to engage with those materials, which we're really excited about. So I hope you'll come and visit us a little later this month. Bring your kids and--
Also, just a comment. As a previous educator, I always appreciated the partnership with the library, being able to access books when I needed them for like my lessons and all of that. And I know that you've done even more so for HSD teachers and staff by like letting us use your space when needed and engaging with families and students and just promoting community as a whole. So also, very hopeful for this.
I am really excited. I'm relatively new in my role, and I'm very excited to keep expanding on that partnership. I think we've both really appreciated the opportunity to jointly serve the families and the community here.
We also have a question from Nancy.
Yes, this will be on the ballot in November.
Any other questions?
Just one more thank you. Just one more thank you from me. Aside from the levy, I just want to thank the libraries for making cards available to all of our students and that level of our partnership and the electronic information they can get to, but also checking out books from the library. And also, over time, much as Director Ryan serves on the library board, members of the library serve on our curriculum committee and support us with our development. You all share the value that we do around multilingualism, and so I just appreciate the partnership. So thank you.
Likewise, we have your media coordinators serving on our strategic plan committee, and that's been great to have her voice there as well. So again, thank you for that partnership in both directions. It works great.
Thank you.
Can you answer some questions? It was yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Was this one--
Nancy.
It's in November. Yes.
I just want to be able to say, please forgive me, sweetie, but I just wanted to confess. Libraries have been a part of my life since the very beginning, at every level. And every city that I've lived in, in the United States and around the world, I've been a part of a library. And I grew up to learn that you don't turn down a library levy, you don't turn down a school levy. Washington County Library is going to be, and it is committed, and you don't have to act like you're--
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Tammy? Nope? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and taking the time to be here with us today, and then we'll go ahead and go to our next presentation.
Good morning, Chair, and board members and community partners online. I'm Jim Whedon. I'm the Sheriff's Patrol Operations Commander. So I also, like Tammy, am a public employee, so there's very limited things that I can say. I really do have to stick to the script. Once it's over, I can answer any questions to clarify, and of course, I can answer anything operationally. Those questions are fair game. So I do want to start, I haven't spoken to the group yet before, so I just want to say thank you for the partnership and thank you for entrusting your children and their safety in-- just really appreciate that partnership. So the local option levy, this is 34-346. Okay, this is the public safety local option levy. Now, this is a county-wide levy, so even if you live in the city, Hillsborough, Beaverton, Tigerhead, Gaston, rural communities, Aloha, everywhere in Washington County, if you work or live inside the bounds, this local option levy touches you in some way with the public system. And we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. So back in, or in 2025, November, same ballot, this will be on the ballot for the local option levy. You'll see at the bottom there, this is a $337 million levy over a period of five years. And what that is going to fund is police prosecution, mental health response, domestic violence, juvenile services, all kinds of things. Basically, every piece of the ecosystem that is criminal justice will be folded into that, and we'll go-- we'll go into a little bit more about that here. We'll talk a little bit more about the economics, but it is, this levy is 66 cents per thousand. So it's really important to know that it's 66 cents per thousand on the assessed value of the home. So that's not the market value. You get a lot of questions about that when you go to the county and you see what the assessed value is on your form. That's the number that they're going typically is lower, and we'll talk about that here in a second. So the overall county funding in terms of public safety, I like to think of it as a stool with several legs. One of those legs holding that stool up is the county's general fund. So that's the big bucket that all of the funding goes into. That's one of the stools that funds public safety. The second one is the enhanced sheriff's patrol district. So this is the district typically in the east, south, and north areas of Washington County, outside the cities. Essentially paying a volunteered additional tax for additional police services that fund. There's also federal, state, and other grant funding. That's another one of the legs that keeps the funding rolling, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, which is the local option levy of the whole Washington County. So we talked a little bit about what that means. The prosecution, so this is, you can imagine prosecution would be the district attorney's office. So a deputy out on the street makes an arrest, they come to the district attorney's office for prosecution, and the jail would do some sort of triage to see if they're going to stay there. So it touches all of them, probation and parole on the backend, juvenile services, to be able to get those wraparound services, so we can divert juveniles away from that system and more into more appropriate services, and then support for domestic violence. And we'll talk about, a little bit about a couple of those programs and initiatives that we have in Washington County. Okay, it passed. So basic policing, theft, car theft, break-ins, graffiti, this funds partially general policing. So it's everything under the sun that the deputies and officers go out and respond to. You can see an average of one vehicle stolen per day for the last three-year period. Makes it seem like it's a really dangerous spot, but I want to assure you, this is actually a very safe community, and it's just important to know that we need to stay on top of that stuff, and being funded is one of the ways that we were able to do that. Enhancing prosecution of child abuse and child pornography cases. So I know it's heavy stuff to talk about. It's very difficult work. I actually was a child abuse detective for a period of time, and I had a caseload of 22 to 25 cases at any given time. Very difficult work, and requires a lot of follow-up, follow-through, and really wraparound services to help victims of those crimes kind of move forward. And again, that takes a fair amount of effort and funding to be able to do those sorts of things. And you can see this one here, the child abuse reports have increased 17% on an average about nine reports per day. It's tragic, but it's something that we really need to stay on top of. Victims' assistance, so this is emergency programs for families touched or harmed by domestic violence. So you've heard of our, we have domestic violence resource centers, we have the Family Justice Center. These are places where families can have that follow-through, follow-up services after the fact, so we can divert resources, we can get education, we can do all kinds of things to be able to make sure that we're encompassing the world and pushing forward in a productive way. Combating the deadly drugs like fentanyl and the drug trafficking organizations. So I think you have all probably heard the mantra, "One pill can kill." That's kind of, it was an initiative that was pushed recently, but that's very, very dangerous. And just to kind of put it into context, over the last three years, the sheriff's offices seized 1.3 million of those fentanyl pills. It's a big problem, and it's flowing through our community, and it's one of the things that we really need to stay on top of. And one of the ways that we do that in Washington County, and you've probably heard this a million times, so I don't want to sound like a broker director, but collaboration is really what we do in Washington County. We do that very well, and we do that by ways, lots of ways. But one of the ways we do that is by inter-aged communities, and that's one of the ways we're able to attack some of these really bigger, like complex issues like the drug trafficking organizations. Actually, I'll step back in this. There's another one here, which is our mental health response team. So if you haven't heard of this one, this is basically, we have a deputy sheriff in one seat, and we have a mental health master level clinician in the other seat, and they're able to go out there to the community and divert folks. You know, 10 years ago, they would take people to jail, and now we're able to get them into more appropriate services and get that follow-through and follow-up. This is another thing that is funded in part by the local option levy. Talk a little bit about the jail before. It is of note, our jail is not operating at full capacity. It's for a couple reasons. Right now, they have some maintenance things, there are emergency maintenance issues that they're working on right now, but it's also staffing and other funding charges. So in order for the jail to run smoothly and to keep triaging folks and keep the ecosystem going, and that's all Beaverton, Hillsborough, Tigerhead, all cities and county agencies, they all funnel through the same jail. It needs to be fully, properly funded. And actually, our jail is the second smallest per capita, per thousand, in the state. So it's actually a relatively small jail. I mean, it's big, but not compared to other places, if that makes sense. So it's really important that we stay on top of that funding as well. I talked about the mental health response team. So these are, this is really cutting-edge for us and really leading, certainly the state, if not the nation. I don't know where other places are on this, but I can tell you, we're leading the charge. We have a really solid team, and we're expanding all the time. We just put another one on, another deputy and clinician together out on the street. And again, they can respond to very difficult, complex calls with people in mental health emergencies. So it's really important, I know I'm wearing a sheriff's office outfit here, but if in the communities of literally the city of Hillsborough, if there's a, you know, an issue in your neighborhood and it requires an additional specialist for mental health, the mental health response team will come to that. So that's, it's really important to know this is a countywide service. It passed. Well, will it do? Okay, we're getting into the, again, the numbers, the economics. Mr. Watson was asking about this earlier. So this is, again, a replacement levy. So--
Yeah.
Yeah, replacement levy. So this is 66 cents on every thousand dollars of the assessed value. I talked about that earlier. So on average, of an average home of $348,600, it'll be about $19.17 per month, or $230.8 per year. And then when compared to the current levy, the increase would be about $6 more per month. The math doesn't show it on here, but it's essentially, right now, it's 47 cents per thousand, and this will be a 66 cents per thousand. It's really important to know that the vote, this measure, is not for the 19 cent increase, it's for the whole thing. So this is an all or nothing, it's a package to kind of deal. So it's important to know, the vote isn't, yes, I'm good with the 19 cent increase, it's, am I good with this levy? That's essentially what the question will be in November. And again, we talked about the $337 million. It's essentially, that is the quantifiable amount of service that this levy provides. If it does not pass, essentially, the services will not be provided as proposed, and the taxes, property taxes would not be increased. I can't really talk a lot about that, but that's the-- In summary, again, we talked about all of this stuff, the prosecution, mental health. If you think about the whole wraparound ecosystem of the criminal justice system, many parts of that system are touched by the local option levy and other funding sources. And I'm not going to explain the other stuff, but with that, I'll just open it up if there are any questions on the levy, and then I'll open it up for any questions, since you have me here for operational stuff.
Yes, you can't advocate.
I cannot advocate. There's a commissioner that would come and talk about advocacy, and there's no one here tonight, so I can't--
Allow me to advocate. I'm a big fan of the recently retired Sheriff Pat. I'm a big fan of the current Sheriff Pat, I mean Sheriff Patriss, for female reasons only. But you guys are important, and we are facing some really interesting times right now. We need more, not less, just like the library. This is just one of those things that's a no-brainer, and I'm hoping to pray that this community sees it as such. So just wishes to you, and I'll have pies out on my yard, and, you know, I'll wear a sandwich board, you know, one side library, one side--
Had Sheriff's Department, we'll get it done.
Hey, it's not specific to the levy, but how big is your mental health response team?
I believe we have a team of six right now. I believe, yes, spread around six, six units, so six groups. And it's not all sheriff's office, so we have two all-in, Tigerhead, South Cities area, Hillsborough, and Beaverton. Beaverton actually has recently, due to budget constraints, have pulled out, and we refilled that spot.
Thank you.
Great questions.
Someone lived in Aloha 22 years. Thank you. Just recently moved into Hillsborough, and everybody in this room knows that I will often, every single time, take the opportunity to point out that people often conflate HSD with the city of Hillsborough, and we are not. We have eight buildings in the county? Nine? Anybody best guess?
Nine.
Nine.
County, Lenox. I'm not going to count.
Outside Hillsborough. Yeah, so I guess North.
Yeah.
Yeah, North Plains and various municipalities, but so, yeah, yes. Being able, I could walk to Reedville, Tobias, and Indian Hill, so Aloha. Yeah, full on Aloha. So thank you, and thank you for your cooperative nature. You guys always approach with our SRO program. I know getting from probably Butter Nut Creek to North Plains is probably about as far as you would have to go in HSD, and that's the area you guys cover, so thanks for doing that.
I would love to learn more about these proposed services. Is there like a hub where all this information is accessible, especially to families that speak Spanish? Because I can already think of some questions that some families might ask regarding--
The sheriff's office website does have information, but it is direct, it's a resource directive. Deputies on calls will come out, and they provide, they actually have an app, a phone app, that will give some of the services, or possibly all electronically, and that's a gift to our there. That's more like the victim services side, but I have the app that'll work on my phone because I'm actually an office person, and I'm actually out there handling calls. But if it works, I can share that with you, and you can see that. But yeah, so there are multiple avenues, but I would start with the sheriff's office. And what I can do is, I'll leave a stack of my business cards on here, on the table back here, and feel free to reach out with any questions like that if you're not getting the answers that you need, and then also to clarify, make sure we're right on our numbers with how many teammates there are on our MHRD. Anything like that that is on-the-ground operational, I'd love to help, and my email's on there. And my phone number goes to my desk, but it pushes through to myself, so you can get hold of me anytime. Yes, ma'am?
Kind of level set, everybody. In my day job, I have exactly what you are describing and what you all are doing now. It costs about half a million dollars to have clinicians and peer supporters to be involved and to partner with the professionals. That's a half a million dollars, and I'm only at two grants out of eight. That is the kind of service that they're finding trying to provide. For them, it's even more, arguably more expensive, because you can't have a peer supporter with the officer. You have to have a clinician. So it has to be a master level, MSL, LAFCW, sorry, is what it is. And so I'm just trying to give you all an idea of how much this kind of service costs. So if this is what they've already done already, then imagine what they'd do with someone. And it is extremely, extremely important that we greet the citizens, our clients, when they come in the door with as much humanity as we can, and that's what we try to do. So rather than calling police, rather than using my security officers, the first person, if we feel that there's a person, we engage with our mental health team. In fact, it's cascading in a different way. So we have our own project responding. So I really appreciate that you guys are trying to do that, but I wanted to throw that number out there just to help everybody to level set you on how much of an investment that it is, because it's a big investment. And oh, by the way, the library facilities, they probably need their own as well. I'm just--
These are, oh, sorry, these are actual not advocacy, so I mean, if you don't know, you don't know. Renewal of the levy, how many previous iterations have there been?
Renewal of the levy, how many previous iterations have there been?
I think it's been since, oh my gosh.
It's quite a while.
Long time, several, several.
Yeah, I think library is maybe the third time, fourth time. Not quite as long, but.
I don't know the history of that, unfortunately. I've only been here a couple of years, so other than what Kate was saying.
Sure.
Replacing a renewal that the last increase was 10 years ago, I don't know beyond that.
And do either of you recall, like, the rate at which the previous one passed? Like, our bond was two to one, we were pretty proud of that, so like, I'm guessing it wasn't that close.
Oh, the rate of, the voting rate?
Yeah.
I believe it was 60 each percentage.
I'm just relaying information that I've heard from others that said that the public safety one also passed by a significant margin.
I just, for those who are too far along, you had asked about materials in Spanish. We do have like a copy of this presentation in Spanish. I have Spanish-speaking staff that are working to reach out to community groups to deliver the same information specifically to Spanish-speaking community members. I would be happy to share that if we could leave my card and connect with you offline and share those materials with them.
Absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt. Do you think you can give us someone to talk, contact that can advocate?
Any of the county commissioners? Yeah, any of them, and county commissioner in the districts, it depends on where he lives at that point.
Hey, Willie for the most.
Yeah, probably. I'm sure he would be happy to tell you any, what he thinks about the levy.
All four, have a tiny management agency, sorry to interrupt. All four county commissioners have a small part of those two districts.
Yeah, so really, any of them, you can look up, on the Washington County website, you can type in just Washington County Commissioners, it will say who is in charge of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, and, so, my boss's boss's boss, Sheriff, she would love to tell you anything about that, and she's, you can always reach out to her.
I'll take you.
Questions on the levy? Seeing none, any operational staff at all? Any questions?
Thanks for supporting our schools through our SRO program.
If you want to just offer, if there's any times in the future, we have a lot of changes coming in policing with tech and advancements and updates from the sheriff's office, if there's anything I can do or we can do collectively as a command team to come and give you information or presentation or anything like that, we'd love to do that. Again, I'll leave some cards here, and feel free to reach out.
Thank you. Next agenda item is to discuss superintendent goals with.
That's me, thank you. In the retreat in August, we discussed two different goals for me, and the first one seemed like a slam dunk. The second one, I wanted to share that I changed a little bit in talking with four directors in my department, so I can help you refine my thinking about what's important. And it formally goes to collaborate with HSD directors for our bond, and then also for stable and adequate funding for K-12 education. And the more that I think about it and talk to folks, I think it's more important that I focus my attention and we focus our attention and time together on understanding the budget situation for K-12 schools in the state of Oregon, and having a concerted effort among ourselves and across districts in talking to our elected officials and talking to community leaders about the challenges that we face. And so, I crossed out the bond part of that, because I think that's going to take care of the best leadership with the committee and all of us working together. I think that's a predictable process with a lot of folks leading it. Trickier task ahead of us is going to be how we challenge our message around, not just going into the short session, but in general, for the content that we're reviewing. So, with your approval, I've moved forward with those two goals, and as we do on our check-ins, one-on-one, I have an ongoing note sheet, so that each director can discuss with me about what, who your network is and where you see your advocacy role, and then our team here will report the materials that you need and we can report. Having answered questions here. Have you folks talked about this with me, if you have anything to add to that story?
How does the new goal show up? Is it, do we have?
In your, in your situation page, it's really simple. Collaborate with HSD directors and advocacy for stable and adequate funding for K-12.
Curiosity, are the goals are private, or are they public?
They're public, and they're supposed to be decided on in a public session between the.
Okay.
It's part of my evaluation process. We're on nine standards developed by COSS and OSBA, and then two goals at the bottom of the.
I just couldn't remember if the, if the goals were public or private. I like what you've done, I don't, I don't have any objection to you massaging that, because I agree with you 100%. I think the bond is going to be going down that predictable pathway. We don't know what the outcome is, but it has a pathway. That is much more germane to what's to hear now and our priorities.
Thank you.
So, you said that you use OSBA standards. My guess is, or assumption is that those two goals hit on most of those standards? I haven't looked up and seen them, sure. Or are they completely separate from those goals?
Completely separate. So, the goals are the standards that describe what an effective superintendent would do, and I'm scored on those traits and expectations, and then the goals are just, what, what are the leadership challenges that we face as a district, and we as board and superintendents decide on those collaboratively, and then at the end of the year, that becomes part of my evaluation. How did I do, we need those more, we need our goals to be different, how did I be supporting directors?
And so, at the retreat, you guys shared that beautiful school improvement plan for schools. My wondering is, which one are the ones that you see more aligned to, like, cascading up to the strategic plan and down to like your cabinet departments and then ultimately Trying to kind of see what, how your goal or the standards hit on your people.
I think what I hear you asking is which of the goals were the strategic principles? I would focus on with my personal goal as superintendent, and those are the big five that we go like publicly with. So, like, third grade reading, intensive learning, ninth grade on track, four-year and five-year grad rate. And then there are like 25 other goals that are subsets of those, but that would be, and the categories that I have listed for myself would be to report back to the board in the spring as part of my self-reflection. Here's the five, and here's how we're doing, and here's how our action steps changed in order, in places where we weren't meeting, here's where we changed our actual steps, and then in places where we are meeting our goals, here's how we carried on.
Okay, yeah, because I'm just thinking, like, the school improvement plan obviously is based off of the strategic plan, and I'm assuming, I'm just trying to see, like, is there, are we pretty aligned, I guess?
I think they're aligned. I think one of the things is, the big five didn't necessarily always connect with all school levels in some capacity, especially around like some of the reading goals that we want to create for ourselves, like, separate from third grade reading are what we need to do. So, while the strategic plan does have 24, a lot for Travis to be in charge of, it also, we talked about it, that allows schools to be, because sometimes the big five is not what a school necessarily has specifically in their data sets that they need to be working on. So, the 20 allows us to work forward in making achievement in those areas, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. And the last thing I'll say is, from our conversation, that I was sharing with him how, what I feel like I need as a new elected member, and being able to take this back to people and advocate for more funding, because I'm still learning. I do feel like my network is probably more educators, teachers and so, but for me, having that narrative really is helpful. So, I ask Travis, you know, I'd love to have, like, if this passes, this is all the things, this is the story, right? This is how our students are going to see this and feel it and all that, our families. And if it doesn't, here's, let me, let me have you picture what's going to happen, and I think that hits, I guess, the heart more, because we can give them numbers, if someone asks questions, we can give you the numbers, but to really be able to paint that picture of what will change and what will drastically be impacted if not, so that was just one of the asks that I had.
That's a question I might be thinking about, and then how we can, what is that also? Here, Hillsborough, we have your own, your storytelling, you're providing data depending on the audience that you're connected with, so thank you for that.
So, in having, in removing the bond efforts specifically from your, one of your goals, and I do agree that, you know, that funding advocacy and working, working with the directors in that way is something that definitely should be a priority of all of ours for this year. But for the bond, who do you think then is, who is our spearheading person in terms of, I mean, are we looking to cabinet, or are we looking to the leaders of the bond committee, like former board member Erica Lopez, or?
All of the above.
Best the project manager. Best the project manager of forming our committee and running the process, but other people have huge parts. I've been engaging with Piper Samler to discuss the, like, fighting our student, they're the team I've worked with. Ultimately, I have students that are old for myself, they just don't show up here, so that, that remains like a huge priority for me. I just thought that the, the challenge for me in this one, the more that I talk to folks around the state, this is a serious problem that needs attention, and I wanted to challenge myself to focus on this. Not that I'm de-emphasizing the importance of the bond in this year's cycle of leadership challenges, but this one I'm curious about, because these times that we're experiencing are new. So, that's why I'm refining it down to just that. But I'll be heavily involved in the bond process too, at any meeting.
And I completely agree, and I want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, with the letting presentation fresh in my mind, like, I know that the bonds may also have some limitations on what employees are allowed to say versus what directors are allowed to say. So, I just want to make sure that we're going into the school year just really ready to take those separate little paths as needed.
Thank you for that. And once we get to chairs of the committee with Erica Lopez and Steve Calloway, they'll become cheerleaders one and two, and then the board of directors yourselves, you all will be innovative advocates, and then staff. We just thought tonight would be a, the version of a staff presentation on the staff, and then we can be flanked with advocacy when we talk to different constituents. I think in answer to your question, now that I understand it better, best team captain on the committee work, and then it would be Steve and Erica who really will take up the leadership on the faculty.
Ideally, when, whenever a staff member does a presentation like this, we would have somebody who can advocate with them at the table to provide the advocacy component. These are what we did last time successfully.
Just to share with our newly elected members, so excited about it. One of the things I learned when I first came on doing the first term was, I had the opportunity to get involved in that overall strategic plan. And by being the liaison, you, you then understand, you get into, I'm not advocating you to become the liaison, it's a lot of work, however, that will be your opportunity to understand how everything, Audrey, Brooke, and Travis do, Beth does, everything that they do, you can roll it up to one of those things in that strategic plan, at every point at every time. It's a beautiful thing. I didn't realize how deep it can go, but that's exactly what happened. And so, if you get the chance, maybe Rose or Beth can share it with you, the existing strategic plan that we have now, with all of its parts, and then you'll see where a lot, so much of what we're doing just rolls right up to it, and everything works towards the good of everything in that strategic plan. And it's really a beautiful thing to see it work like that. So, I just wanted to share that with you. So, it's not like it's one person going, oops, I forgot this, no. It's like, it's an army, it's a village, and the village makes sure that everything that we did in that strategic plan, everything he does rolls up into that plan, everything Audrey does rolls up into that frame, everything Brooke does rolls up into that plan, and everything we do, quite frankly, can roll up into the plan in one of those millions of buckets. And there's a ton of buckets. So, it, you know, when you get the chance, dig into the current strategic plan, it's pretty cool, it's pretty awesome how it evolved, how it was created, and how we're going about the process.
Collaboration and advocacy part. I was talking to somebody recently, and like, I always encourage all my board colleagues, meet with our local representatives. They're more than happy to meet with you. They're in their off-season now, now's the time to do it, before they get to the critical time at the end of the year, whatever, around the holidays, and then when session's going to start. They, they will take a meeting with you, get coffee, get lunch, go to happy hour, or whatever it is you do, and they do, do one of those things, so they get to know you personally a little bit. I had a copy of Representative McLean yesterday, had a great conversation, she's always happy to talk to a board member. And then, so for, for you, ideally, the representatives know who we are, because we've created that connection with them. I was fortunate enough to, you know, be in the Capitol quite a bit this last legislative session, saw you and Brooke on the, on little TV in my office, went down, great to, I think if we could let board members know when those things are happening, if you guys want that kind of support, having a board member sitting behind you, even if we don't talk, I think if they know who we are, they understand how supported you are in this endeavor. I don't know if that makes sense, but like, Representative McLean, Senator Solomon, Representative Sosa, Representative Chichi, all, they all have, Representative Phan, they all have, Senator Compton, they all have areas, big areas in our district. They all should know who we all are by now. And so, you know, I think if it's possible for some, for a board member to be, even if we're not slated to speak, in that, you know, first row, second row, right behind y'all, when you're doing your presentation or talking to legislators, I think that helps reinforce just how supported you are in this work.
A couple of different strategies to talk about accountability, state of emergency, state of emergency, depending on who is talking to you, which is the strategic. I hope that directors reported priority with the facts, and then text away when you're talking with somebody and you'd like information. That feels good when somebody's in the Capitol and they're texting us for our opinion or some facts from HSD. So, I agree with your mark, that's one of the relationships we need right now.
I was able to mention yesterday, I know it's early in the accountability process, but we haven't noticed a reduction in the amount of reports we have to create. And that, it's something I would hope, I'll be meeting with Representative Chichi this Thursday or Friday, so yeah. It's good, just something to keep on the radar, that, you know, you said that reporting would decrease, and it's early, but we haven't seen that yet, so keep it on your radar, please.
I have my second meeting tomorrow, so advocacy as well.
So, all I need is a special, and we can even continue to define what it means to collaborate and to communicate. Thank you.
All good?
Thank you.
Fantastic. Great, thank you. Our next agenda item is, oh, at the board retreat, we had a conversation about our board goals, and the board goals are in our packet. Would anyone like to start a conversation regarding those proposed goals? If you had a opportunity to look at them.
I was wondering about the board engagement, and wondering, and I'm not sure how it was done last year, but is there a way to ensure that we're hitting the right areas as far as like events go, or just places you want to show up and be? Like, is there like a list out there that we're like, I can be there, you can be there, and we're kind of making sure it's balanced out and it's not falling all on you, or trying to show up to these places? Like, is there a way to do that, or?
Yes. One of them would be the hot news. They have their events on there, but I also take the opportunity to look at the HSD calendar, and I just actively look at like what's happening, and if something's happening that night, I make sure to go if I have time to. I think it's just as an individual board member. I think it's just as an individual board member, what you can commit to and you can make it. You know, you don't, you don't expect you to go to every single event, you know? Just find the time that works for you, whether that be, you know, sometimes we have the family packs come out and they let us know when they're having an event, and if they give an opportunity to go and show up and support, there's that. There's also, on the outside of that, there's also like things that happen with other entities within like the city that, you know, as a board member, you can go partake in and be present, like Mark was saying, even if you just show up, it's important. Your presence is important and people will notice that. I don't know, you know? Or Rose too, is another great example, or Audrey, if you want to visit a school, you can be like, hey, I want to visit a school. Like, what do you recommend? And then you just sort that along with them.
Thinking like, if there's an event and I see that already, like, there's three of you, and I might be like, okay, I don't have to go to this one.
I don't think we, there isn't a list that keeps track of that attendance.
Yeah, there's no list that keeps track of that attendance. And then, if we see each other, then that's great.
Yeah. I think that if there are, if there are more than one or two board members who want to go see a particular program or a school, or, or, you know, attend something, that's something that can be coordinated by the Cabinet. And, you know, that way we're not, you know, each individual board member isn't going to school on three different times and taking up staff time and all of that too. So, I think those kinds of things can be coordinated, but in the past, we haven't had a way of tracking who's going to what and where. Graduations, we generally have a tracking sheet of saying who's going to be at which graduation, but really anything, if, if folks are available and can attend any of the things that are listed in that, in that area. Actually, the more the merrier in terms of participation.
Yeah. Board updates. Rose was just mentioning. And I think the only one where we, where there's like sort of tracking is like we've, there's a tour that's gonna happen, whether like we did, cited it once, the Nutrition Services Tour, or the Transportation Tour. Yeah, those are usually tracked because then Rose will be like, do you want to attend these? You know, because it's for the board members. And so, other than that, there's not much like list or tracking on where board members go.
Yeah, it's something that maybe we might want to consider, just thinking these are board goals. And one worry that I have is that we might fail to show up in certain spaces that maybe historically, school board members haven't. And maybe if it's at least one of us, you know, but I wouldn't know what those are. Or, you know, like, we have our commemoration month, for example, but let's say nobody shows up to the Latino, not that this will happen, but like the Latino Heritage one, but then a lot of people show up to the Black History. It's just, you know, how, making sure that we have a good balance and that we're keeping ourselves in check, that we're ensuring our presence is.
I think we, we did have a conversation, we were talking about this, and I think one thing that I did bring up was to, she and is like, I, our board goals is like as an individual member, because I don't think it's also my job to keep account of like, what are you doing, Jessica? You did this, but you didn't do that type of thing. So, I think it's also hard to track of what we're all doing. And so, I, I think it, it comes down to as an individual board member, but also kind of leading to the self-evaluation that's at the bottom of our role, to do a self-reflection of what we have done, what have been, how can we improve in that? So, I think that's a good segue to board evaluation.
One thing that may help is we've marked, for the commemorations, we're calling them cultural commemorations events. We've already mapped out this year's events and have dates and locations. I can send it in a board update with Rose, the calendar of the events, so that you have at least those four events already on your schedule, which is something you want to do.
I just want to acknowledge, I just want to acknowledge, Jessica. Here we are, we're on the campaign trail. She was the one that did exactly what she just described. What, where are we going? What are we doing? And I thought, you're bringing it out of the book. I love where your heart is. It's really awesome to play, to musical, and, and events for the kids that are actually at the schools. That's always a big deal when we can do that as especially when we have our youth members, our school student members, when they're involved in things. And so, we had a, a group of, was it two or three at a time that were actually into the arts? And so, we were going to plays and musicals because they were all in our, where they were on our board. So, we kind of fall in from there, and it's just, yes, we would probably be more organized. So, I appreciate where you're going with that. But you made me flashback to the campaign. You know I do not like campaigns, so.
Sometimes we'll get invitations from teachers and educators who are doing like special events, or like chess, like the chess club that they have, you know, sometimes, because it is a large district and a lot of schools and a lot of people, and sometimes they will just email us and be like, hey, we're doing this, this time, on this day, and we're happy to have you. Yeah. There's many different ways of finding.
I was just gonna say, I think that in the past, you've been pretty consistent with announcing events during board meetings, like towards, maybe toward the end of the meeting, during your board chair time. So, that could be one opportunity to avoid, you know, to know that, that that's happening and maybe get, you know, some kind of eye contact with one another, and maybe we start there and, and then make sure that we're, as we check in during the year, to see if that worked or not.
Ideas. Yeah.
To add on the self-evaluation portion, this is something that, I mean, we, I think it was last year, the first time we used Kristin to have, from OSBA, to help, what do you call it? Help do the superintendent evaluation. Rose checked with Kristin, and they do have a board self-evaluation process as well. And so, that is something that if folks are okay with, we would like to explore what it would look like for our board to do a self-evaluation, not for this school year, but beginning the process for the following school year, but at least inviting Kristin to come give us a presentation. And in those, in those meetings, or in that goal-setting process, maybe it is we put some metrics to what it means to be, you know, actively engaged. You know, are we, you know, attending X number of events per school year, or whatever it could be. I don't know what other, we've never done a board self-evaluation, and so we don't know what kind of metrics there could be and what kind of ideas Kristin could have. And so, that is something that we as a board can decide on and have conversation about, especially with Kristin, and she can help guide us in the right direction of what it would look like to, to craft some of those goals and how to actually measure that when we're doing our self-evaluation.
Well, that's not, one old man's table has done a board self-evaluation, so.
This board, oh, okay.
Yeah. Give me a minute. And I would, I would be supportive of the idea of trying to engage OSBA, help us direct that activity, especially since there's not a lot of our knowledge about how we do it or whatever, and they have probably a well-established program, so.
Sure.
Of investigating that and involving OSBA in that. I think these are all good goals, doable, reasonable. I would say five is more than we've ever had that I can remember. It seemed like we could be doing anyway.
We had.
I think that five is more than we've had in the past.
We also did have a discussion about that, of how, when, because I'm very pro self-evaluation and getting Kristin in the room with us to have a discussion and ask her questions about the process and all that it takes, but also, are we doing our board goals right? Or is this how she's seen it before, you know? Can she help us or guide us in this, in this direction? Or maybe we're just overdoing it, or not doing it correctly? Or are we doing it wrong? I shouldn't say that, but, you know, maybe there's a different approach to it. You know, that way, I think we did have a lengthy conversation about that, about the board goals and what they actually mean and all of that. Because even at the end, I was just like, wait, maybe I'm confused of what it means. Because I was like, I think all of those do represent what we are as board members, and we do that every day, but what else can we do, or how we just simplify every, like, I said, I think we may be, um, over, not overdoing it, but just overthinking it. And so, I think just bringing her in and having that conversation would be great for all of us. Actually, that, stuff about.
Sure, OSBA will be thrilled to.
Wonderful. Yeah, we just wanted to get that, that everybody else was on board to get that process rolling with Rose and Kristin. Any other questions or comments regarding our board goals? Wonderful. Our next agenda item is the cell phone guidance update with Audrey. Oh, just kidding. Working agreements. How did I forget? And I was just looking at it too. Our next agenda item is working agreements with the board and superintendent. At the board retreat, no edits were suggested. We have it on our packet. Is there any discussion regarding that before we move forward with it?
So, essentially the same last year, with the dates changed?
Our next agenda item is the cell phone guidance update.
I did put in a board update, I think that was two weeks ago, just kind of where we were headed in terms of this work, and then this, this previous year, the update from the retreat, that we're, it's a two-hour. The update that I gave you did talk about our plan to implement starting at the beginning of the school year, regardless of where the policy was at that time, because in our feedback from administrators, there is no desire, there was no desire whatsoever to try to start something mid-year, and the challenges that come with that are, are pretty large. So, we have started the year with a, I love Mary Kay, I got you. So, we have started the year with a cell phone restriction at our school, K eight, or K twelve, and just wanted to remind you, these are the resources that I had shared before. The executive order is there. The guidance for, from ODE is there as well. That has not been updated. There was word on the street it was going to be updated, but it hasn't. And then the FAQ has been updated as recently as last week, and that's actually a pretty helpful document for myself and our team, because it is really the questions that have been coming up in schools, like, does this mean this? Does this really mean this? And so, you kind of go through that, and it actually answers the question that you might be having. So, I really encourage you, if something popped up, that's a great resource. If you have a community member that asks you like, why is this happening? There's a great answer in there about that. Does it really include lunchtime and passing time? The answer is yes, that's in there as well. So, all of those pieces are located in that FAQ. So, and if it's not there, feel free to send it to me, and I can always send it into ODE. So, just as a reminder, a PED device is anything that can make and receive calls, make and receive texts, and access with our internet independent of the school's network. And this does include, we've had to clarify this a little bit, and this is another thing that's on the FAQ, it does include things like smartwatches, AirPods, and our wireless headphones. So, that is something, just as a reminder, we've had to reiterate that some students and staff as well, that that does include all of those things. Things that we have had to do, and as a reminder, K eight, we were pretty much in compliance with this executive order. Nine twelve, we were mostly in compliance with the executive order. And so, the, the big push that has happened at the high school level is obviously our lunch at passing time, in which we are restricting the use of cell phones during that time. It did, the law does, or the policy guidance allows flexibility regarding travel to and from athletics and activities and that sort of, sort of thing. In conversations with everybody prior to the start of the school, we have allowed for the use of cell phones when students are traveling to activities or athletics. My daughter happened to text me today on the bus, like, heading to her event, even though she left during school time. We are saying that that is okay. You had an option to not have that be okay. We just felt that that was a, a time space that was essential for our students. So, we are giving guidance to that, and the policy draft that you will see from us will likely have that in there as. Where we're at right now is we have gotten the policy draft here from OSBA, and we are in processing, nuancing it for HSD. We have done implementation start at the start of the school year, like I shared. We've communicated that through Hot News and a heavy push through high school newsletters. I know my own daughter's high school has had it come out, I think, twice, and once and maybe in so little separate thing too. So, there was a large push, especially at the high school. There was a clarity of where the devices could be stored. Basically, ours has gone with the not on the person, so they can be in backpacks and for lockers, vehicles at the high school in that case. And that is a no cost to the district when we're in a $20 million shortfall. At this time, I don't think spending money to have storage pieces at this time is where we need to be focused on. And, and to be fair, I want to tell you all, just in the last five days, because we're on day five, day four, depending on what grade you are, we have had different folks from our building, out in buildings, and we have had, we, today, actually, our executive director of high school was out at one of our schools, and he saw zero in the five classrooms that he went into, and then he saw two during passing time, one of which the girl frantically put it into the backpack as fast as possible, and the other of which a conversation occurred between the administrator and a reminder and the student. But if the student didn't have a backpack, so the conversation was very much like, do you need a backpack? What can I do to support you with this? And they figured out a plan. At one of our other high schools, on the first day in which they were collecting and confiscating phones, the first day had forty students phones that were collected and turned into the office, the second day had nine, and the third day had three. So, I think that it is, while students may not love this, and I know they are very connected to their devices, I also think it is a good thing because it is keeping students more engaged in what should be happening at school. Where we're at right now too, we've also created an exception form based off of the draft that came from OSBA, because we knew some parents may be asking for an exception already, and we won't have the policy necessarily in place until October. So, we had that form reviewed by OSBA, just to make sure it follows what they expected to have in there, and we are utilizing that as a draft right now. We have utilized it once so far, and really, the question has been, if that need that is coming up cannot be met by a district device, what do you need to meet that need? And a reminder for, if, if students have it already written into IEPs or 504s, we do not need to do a separate form. So, for example, we talked about this for like our diabetics who carry their phones on their person, it's already written typically into a 504, so there's no need for the form, so we're not making that whole work. We've met with all of our administrative groups and both of our labor partners, both of which have been very supportive of this work, and the start to the school year with the understanding that it's better to start a school year with something like this than to try to wait till mid-year. We also had some high school staff guidance that was reviewed with all of the high school staff during in-service week to make sure they were prepared to support our staff with this and the students. And again, it's been a little bumpy, but I feel like very successful and in spirit of what the executive order is asking us today. Couple of more things that we're going to be doing. It's interesting, as we've shared, they also wanted us to have engagement and input. So, it's challenging because the executive order was already passed, but we're doing kind of this engagement input after the fact, but kind of just more about how is it going? How are things working? What questions do you have, and what can we do to support? So, our executive director of high school will be connecting with some student-focused groups in the next week. He starts, I think, next week on Wednesday, just to see how it's going after the first few weeks of school. I'll be attending the district pack leadership meeting as well to see what questions families might have in that group as well. And we've also been reviewing our social media push that went out, just, there's a lot of students that had feedback when it went out on social media, as well as adults. And there has been, for the most part, an overwhelmingly positive response from adults. I think some of the students, maybe not as positive, but some of them thought it was positive, stayed with them. The other piece that we needed to do was our standards of student conduct was printed before this executive order went into place. So, what we did do is we, on our online student standards of student conduct, we kind of graded out, letting them know that that was kind of in process of being revamped, and that we've let our schools know that while parents may reference the printed copy, they can refer to the online copy that shows that we are waiting to finalize our new policy and that that will be tough dated. And also, just FYI, we will not be reprinting the standards of student conduct for weekend out. That is a costly endeavor, so we will utilize the online. Um, the first read of the policy, the goal will be to have that seen by September twenty-third with a policy approval on October twenty-eighth, which will fall in line with the October twenty-first expectation. And then again, after that, we will web, up, update the website and anything else that we can, but not printing all of it.
Andrea, is, I'm curious if the governor's office, how are, what is the metric for measuring this? We've done it, signed an executive order to grade. How do you measure this? What, what is the definition of success? I know what we want, but what is the definition of success and what are, what metrics are used to be quote unquote compliant?
I, I think obviously the order asked us to not have cellphones in schools and have students using them. And so for us, right now, we're seeing success in that, um, in our locations. I think the other piece of it though is, is, um, the metric around like the wellbeing and the social wellbeing of our students and their mental health around what cellphones, social media, and all of those things bring. So in a hopeful, we would see some decreases of some of the things that occur, you know, with social media. We also know that school is seven, six to seven hours of a student stay and we control that component of it. We don't control all the other hours, but we know that we can make reductions in that area and hopefully minimize some of those things. We see a lot of things that come through phones in different reasons. You know, we have inaccurate, you know, threat representations that happen on there. We have, um, other cyber bullying that happens, so hopefully we should see a decrease in that. And again, the engagement of students in school and, um, not feeling that need to be on their phone all the time too. I think, um, whether or not students admit it, um, I think there is an addictive quality to cellphones that we probably all face in some capacity too. And I think hopefully what we'll see is more engagement with each other and more interaction. Actually, another classroom that we were in, it was, um, the teacher was like, it's so amazing, you're all talking to one another. And it was like, I mean, there's some things that are happening out there that I think we're going to see as a residual effect of it.
Um, just clarification on the PEDs. You said, um, AirPods and headphones fall into that? How, how, so based on the bullet points it doesn't, but is there another reason they include?
They could connect to your phone, so your AirPods connects to your phone, so they're making that connection.
So are they not able to have them though for like their Chromebooks?
No, they are not. They, we have, we've actually been, um, my favorite is wired headphones. Yeah, really.
And actually, I can hear my kid saying, they're Bluetooth, not Wi-Fi.
We found a good old fashioned wired headphone set and it really works great. Um, we also saw a student roll in with a Walkman, for those of you that are my age. It was a very retro, um, yellow one, I think, um, from the nineteen ninety's. So, and it had a cassette tape in it.
So if they, if people ask, it's because they can connect to the phone, but wired is fine.
Yes, wired is fine. Great question.
Has there been any discussion on personal laptops, like if someone chooses?
Yeah, we have, um, that's a great question. Personal laptops is a little bit of a gray area because we do have quite a few students that use, utilize them particularly at the high school level. We don't have that happening K eight. And for now, what we have done, because there's a little bit more monitorability of a personal laptop, it's larger, it's bigger, we're kind of seeing what we might need to address in that situation. But right now, that's not been the focus. The focus has truly been our cellphones and the smartwatches and that. That's a great question. It is one that we've kind of set to the side right now to kind of first tackle what really seems to be the, the more abundant use of cellphones. Great question though.
Have you let high school administrations decide whether or not they're going to be test, like, including personal computers?
We have said right now, for now, we're just setting that one aside, focus on the cellphones for all four of our high schools. Is that not the case at your high school?
We have worked.
No, I was just curious because if that's the case, then, uh, each administration should be allowed to choose for their own. But, um, I would just ask if they would require it or not.
Oh, great question. What we always try to do for our high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, we all consistently apply the same approach. So we would not allow one high school to allow personal computers and another one not to. So it would be a collective decision if we do that. Um, we find that it's better if we're all on the same page around that stuff. So, so what we would do, I think, as we get further into this, if we see an issue coming up with personal computers, we'll address it and decide as a group of four comprehensive high schools, what we would want. Right now, um, because we haven't seen personal computers as an issue, we would not focus on that. Yeah, great que, no, great question. I, sorry, I misunderstood you.
So, uh, thank you for the presentation or the, the update. Appreciate that. And I appreciate you touching on the engagement and input facet of this. That's something that is really important to me. I've already connected with you about it. So, um, my first question is, uh, you mentioned, uh, you know, some of the response that we've gotten on some of our social media. Have we received any, um, written communication about this? Because I know that city council has got Hillsborough, I should just clarify, Hillsborough City Council has gotten a couple of messages from constituents mistakenly thinking that the station addressed council and not us.
No, I've gotten, I'm trying to think. I think we have not, or we have got something, some directly to the school or the school administration and we're working out that and the case by communication. Especially when it comes to some of the exception forms or just clarifying what the need is for the student. But to us in general, no, and, um, none that I have seen come across to Travis or myself at this.
I have one parent advocating that we start the beginning of the school year like we have, sort of pin play. So that, that was in the summer, but that's all, yeah.
And then, uh, I also was just, um, thinking in terms of, you know, also having, having a student who, um, who, you know, who is being affected by this policy, um, when you're speaking with the administrative team and with the student focus group, I just wanted to share a couple of things that have come up. So one is, um, that students, I, I don't understand why phones are not being allowed during lunch. Because they're seeing that as their personal free time, and so they, um, they are not understanding that component. Executive order, this is not you making the policy. Um, I don't need to tell you that, but, um, but I'm just, I'm just relaying that. Um, I think that that will be an important piece of the engagement. Um, and then also that, uh, I think, uh, it's great for high school administrators and all, all, you know, staff members to remind families that email is still available as communication. And again, I think we all know this, but, um, uh, when you have a high school student who doesn't check their email regularly, um, it, it does, it's not your first go-to in terms of a communication then. So, um, but they're allowed to check their email as much as they want on their Chromebooks. And so that, that had come up for our household and I needed to send a little message. My son today, and I sent him an email and he tested, so it was like, oh, good, we're already seeing this working, you know. He needed to tell me that robotics was not happening, he's coming home after school. You know, these are the kinds of things we would test and now, um, email made it possible. So, again, I think.
Those are, no, those are two great points. And the student focus groups, we will remind them the executive order is the lunch component and the passing time component, and, um, that's a great reminder. I know when we've met with families, we've talked about email being an easy way to communicate, um, that they can have their Chromebooks all the time and, you know, that can be popped up. So that's a great one to remind them.
Of course. Uh, just what I even have written down. And social media sites are not accessible through the district issued Chromebooks, are they? Um, personal laptops, they would be. And even messaging platforms would be available.
Some applications will be automatically blocked for you. So it does cover social media in a sense? Does that make sense?
I think that's a daring question, but.
On the guest Wi-Fi device, I could go to Instagram, I'm sure, on my own computer. On here.
One of the issues with using personal computers is. For our devices, we have our antivirus, we have our web filter turning off. We ended up in a conversation about personal laptops and that becomes, you know, a question. We'll have other things to consider around keeping the network safe and keeping data safe.
Yeah, I haven't had any problem accessing any social media from our guest network here, so, um, just for what it's worth. You mentioned extracurricular activities, we decided, okay, so like, does that also mean buses before and after school?
Yeah, and buses before and after school was always allowed as part of the order, like, so if I get on the bus, like.
You mentioned K eight, not as much would change, but it's, but a little bit, right? So I think that if it was in their pocket, we never saw it, we wouldn't have tried to enforce anything. But now it has to be in their backpack or locker at K eight, and that is a slight difference a little bit.
Slight difference, yeah. Um, but it's been, but again, overall, pretty well at the middle school level. The nuance for, um, elementary has been smartwatches, has been a little bit more common. And that's been one where we, we've worked out, um, depending on, you know, um, situations that are occurring, they can put it in their backpack, or if there's other reasons why that smartwatch is there, we've worked with some families to do.
Like a medical reason or something, sure.
Yes.
Yeah, my, my ancient watch can't make a call, but it will talk to my phone.
Or if there's, um, a medical reason why they needed to have a smartwatch, that's worked out through their healthcare. We're, again, each one that's coming, we're kind of figuring it out. And is it an exception? Do we need to do that? Can we just come up with a plan that says this is how we'll do this?
It feels like that's part of the going early consequence, but I think it's worth it. Having to figure out those unique situations is worth it to have gone early, I think. So I'm supportive of that, definitely. Um, so weird question that, I guess, administrative team could say. In my discussions with legislators, I've still continued to hit the fact that I think the executive order is poorly written to en, force these things to be in policy and not in an AR. Uh, is that, so like, the, it's rare for us to see the level of operational details called out in a policy. Makes it very inflexible to make changes quickly if, if we encounter something. So I, I have been continuing to advocate for that. Is that something our administrative team is comfortable with? Do we feel like that should be in the AR and not in a policy, or should I just let it go?
I think because it's, um, pretty specific to the executive order and it's not, um, I think we are okay with it in policy. Honestly, it probably will help us in some of our more difficult conversations that we do have it in policy. But I, I think we're okay with it being in policy. And we've also adopted a stance that I don't think is so strict and tight that, um, it feels like there is some flexibility. Like I said, with the traveling to and from, we're not going with, we're not writing something in a policy around like pouches that we're purchasing. We're giving kind of the, 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 the bag, backpacks, lockers, or vehicle. I mean, we've got some open-endedness to that and we've got the exception form that will be in an AR for it. So I think, I think we're okay in policy. Um, and if, if we see something that has to make a change, it's also, we don't have it in policy now and we're making it work. We can figure it out.
Admit it, it will be, and we'll be able to change it and see you bring it to us.
Yep, I will need to bring it to you and we can have that conversation and go through whatever adjustments we might need to make. I know, it is different. I agree with you, but I think we are okay with, in this instance, it's not.
Owns confiscated every day seems like a good trend. What, uh, on whose shoulders is confiscating the phone falling?
It, it is fa, falling to our administrators. That is the, the piece of this where it is a burden that becomes their responsibility and our office staff that have to support the tracking and, and those pieces. Um, it does come at a cost.
So all the confiscations we're aware of now were from administrators, not from licensed or classified staff?
Um, usually what, like, a teacher would do is they'd be like asking a student. Again, we're not going straight to like confiscation. We're really trying to teach, because hey, it just needs to stay in your backpack.
Especially in this transitionary period, but you know, January fifth.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it, it will fall to our administrators and, um, if our teachers, you know, have asked them to put it away and they don't respond or they have to work through it, they'll, they'll figure out the next steps for that student if, if that's the case. I think what we're seeing right now, just like, again, with the forty-three, nine, or forty-two, nine, three, I mean, we're seeing that in all of our schools. It's, um, they're under, students are understanding the rule and the expectation and working through that.
Well, uh, that, that brings me to my harder question.
Those are hard ones, Mark?
I'm sweating.
Those weren't the hard ones, no. So, it, it, one of the reasons I'm, uh, a fan of this approach or what the, the hospital approach was, was I, I don't, I, I like the idea of it not being the responsibility of a teacher in a classroom to police this. Handling it outside the classroom, uh, hence the yonder pouch, which I know is expensive, but that's handle at the door. Teachers don't have to, you don't have to be, you don't end up in a situation where a, a teacher has to be the person to say, or a student can say to a teacher, well, Mr. Smith lets us do this, why don't you let us do this? Uh, teachers should not be put in that position. So the hard question that's the foundation there, or comes from that, so if you, you, a violation of this should not lead to missed class times. It should not be a disciplinary action. That's part of the executive order. So having your phone out does not mean you're suspended or expelled or missed class time as a result of your disciplinary action. But if a teacher has to ask that student to put that away and the student says no, or reacts violently, or whatever, that's, the initial infraction might not be, but now we're leading to, uh, disobedience. So I, I'm concerned about still us having to put the enforcement on our staff, in one-on-one situations or in classroom situations as opposed to at the front door of the building, where, one, we could see, I, I don't love putting teachers in that position of having to be the enforcement arm for this. And two, when it escalates, uh, the splitting hairs of, well, you're not being suspended because you had your phone out. You're being suspended because you told the teacher you're a jerk for asking me to put it away. I'm being generous with the language because that's not normally how I, right? So I mean, I could see that, I could see a student using profanity to a teacher saying, hell no, I'm not going to do it. And now it's a completely different situation.
I think that, I think what it goes back to is right now, we're taking the time to teach the expectations, teach the rules, teach the guidance. And I also think we're not asking our teachers to be the enforcers. We're asking them to put it away and then they can call help if they need to in those situations. I think there's other instances where students will be on cellphones where they have moments of escalation in classes and we're still there to support them in that. So I don't think, um, cellphones are going to be the only thing that might lead a student to have a difficult moment in a class period where instruction could be lost. And I think we figure out what we need to do for that student to support them and figure out a plan for them. If that occurs, we, we've got to come up with something. But I think what we're seeing is if we consistently enforce this, and I would say if Mr. Smith is allowing somebody to do something and, um, Mrs. Smith is not, we need to probably have a conversation with Mr. Smith to say the expectations of the executive order are X, Y, and Z. And, um, by you not following that, that's a different conversation. And, and I think, um, what we're seeing in terms of this work is that it's important that all the staff be on the same page, that the backpacks. And again, I think we're seeing that right now. Um, I think with yonder pouches, we've heard in districts that yes, it's going great, but kids had burner phones that they were putting in the pouches. Um, so they were still going to have a cellphone on them regardless of the pouch. Like, so there was going to be something. So if we're collecting three a day right now that we've seen, then I think, I think we're, um, we're doing okay. And I don't think that would have been probably much different than if we'd had yonder pouches and we had burner phones in them. So, um, so I think, I think it's, again, we're going to keep working through that. We'll be in good communication with our labor partners if we start to see a trend where it's getting, you know, not good for our staff. But again, I think the most important part that we can do moving forward is the consistency in all of our schools, all of our high schools doing the same thing. And, um, and again, confiscating when we need to, because I think the loss of my phone is a bummer. Like, I know a few of us have children in our schools and are like, they're like, I'm never taking my phone out. I don't want anybody to take it for the whole day. That would be worse than not having in my backpack, you know. So I think we're seeing, it, it works. And like most rules, it, it will work out for most students. And then for some students, we have to come up with a, a specialized stand for them. And we can figure those out too. We do those with any other behavior that occurs in the school too, that can be tough.
I look, I look forward to the HCU, HEA reports next session that they choose to include. How it's going from their perspective in their report. I would love that, but you know, no pressure to do so. I would love that, but you know, no pressure to do so.
And I think H C U and H E A are great communicators with H R, too. And I know that they will share if there's something that is occurring, for sure. They're, it's been a good collaborative conversation. And I think the concerns of where it's falling as a, not unfunded mandate fully, but definitely a challenging mandate, is felt by everybody.
I look forward to hearing our student perspective from in the building as well as we go along. And thank you to those of you who have students in buildings sharing their perspective tonight as well. Thanks.
Not a question, just, I kind of share this thought that I had about, it would be kind of cool to see more positive campaigning messaging around this, side by side. I think it's an opportunity that we have to talk about digital wellbeing. I was just looking at my phone last night, it told me I was on it way too much. But it made me pause and be like, okay, it actually showed me my little trend, right? And kind of need your phone to do that, but at the end of the day, you know, they still have their phone and for them to be able to see how much change in their patterns or something, you know, just opportunities to kind of message that. I think it'll help reinforce the why of this, because I do think, although, I think a lot of people are saying, well, this is to avoid distractions, get more engagement, but it's just one piece of that engagement puzzle, right? There's other reasons why students don't engage. But if we're going to do this, then we might as well tell them what you're getting out of this. And so that was just a thought that I had, is just, how do we do more positive campaigning around this?
That is something that our executive director of high schools was talking to the high schools a little bit more about. I think that in the haste to try to make sure we are ready to go, it was more like hear the expectations, which we know we're all, share with the kids, but getting more positive messages around it, and I have shared that with him as well.
Thank you.
I just go here to see how effective it was. I did not really have high hopes for it, sadly. However, I have seen definitely a big change, especially when you look through the hallways. I think it's just that, again, like your factor, like I'd rather have it in my backpack than have it taken away for the entire day. That what I used to be, I've been, people would immediately take out their phones. And now they don't. You know, they actually just walk from class to class. And I think that has been positive influence. I'm actually pretty big supporter of this film that has passed because of just simply some things I have seen throughout the years at Glencoe High School with students kind of like taking pictures of each other and saying new things, sending pictures to each other during class time, then being very destructive, to the point of like taking calls, like calling friends in the middle of class while the instructor is trying to teach, which can be a bit like annoying and also diminishes respect, right, given to the teacher and professor who's trying to teach. And so I'm hopeful to see where this goes. And I do see positive ones and not really like mental fault or anything, but instead of a big challenge. But also it's just how it's just, learning. And we'll see how it goes.
You encapsulated it perfectly, Nicole, in like how it goes. I appreciate you sharing the positive side of it. And that is something that the folks that have been out at high schools have noticed, like kids talking in the hall and not like staring down and running into. That is something that literally tells me, yeah, we're good. I think that's important. I think there is this interaction that we need as humans and it's not always as prevalent when we're doing cellphones.
I have a recommendation.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
No, don't have to apologize.
I, in my high school, I am the A S B team and so I try to collaborate with my administration and my principal as much as possible. I think it's, I think it's really truly relevant to have a group of students, leadership kids, they need the likes to come, talk to the administration, to be like, this is a great thing and as long as this is quite frankly an executive order, remember, but here is an obstacle, can you talk with us, let's collaborate, see what we can do to go beyond that and fix that? And, and, you know, have a successful year. It's a very technical thing, like how are you going to pay for that in my courses and I V classes? I need these applications, they only work from my personal device and things like that. When it comes from students and it actively affects them, collaborating with them every high school, that's what happens.
I know when our executive director of high school comes out, he's going to ask what have been the challenges, what's been good about this, kind of what's the positive and what have been the challenges and thoughts that you have around those. Is that going to be his kind of main two questions with the students? I will say for the vending machines and the different things that they have to buy, you will come up with a little net trade, tap and pay and put it away. So that is how those things will work. So I can get hill high if you need to buy your, whatever it is you buy at the little thing that I know they operate, feel free to tap and pay and then you just put it away. That is, I know we were agreeing on something because we knew everybody pays with their phones nowadays. So that is something where we feel like we need to find a way, but they would put it back in their backpack. So we have, and same with the vending machines. No, thank you for the suggestions and I'll talk to them.
Pocket full of change.
Okay, tap and pay and put it away, okay.
Well, you think that's great, I made that up in five seconds.
Yes, you did.
I just wanted to add, I know you kind of brought up the pouches. I noticed that with my peers, when the phone bill kind of came up, their first thought was like, what happens if there's a school shooting? Because for them, it's really important that they're able to like contact their parents or their families, like if it comes to a point where they have to say their last words to them, having that. So I think students being able to keep their phones in their backpack, they are more likely to follow that rule because they know that in like such a drastic circumstance, they can still have their phone technically with them. Because I mean, our backpacks are with us in the classroom. So if it did come to it, they would be able to still contact their families while following the rules of the school. So I think that's also another thing to consider when bringing up the pouches. Because I know students might not follow that if we do, if we do decide to go with the pouches, because they want to be able to contact their families if that were to happen.
Yeah, if enforcement by teachers doesn't become an issue, sure, fine. To be fair, also, there is some data that suggests your phone during a shooting incident is not a good idea.
Yeah.
That's like a false security blanket, because it can actually be harmful to use your phone during the.
Absolutely, but I think it's just feeling like they can like, feel like their mom is there in that kind of situation, I think is really.
That is a conversation that came up as well in our discussion around what would be, even though the recommendation is from law enforcement to not, it is, I understand what you're saying.
Why do I think it's definitely not a likely best thing? I think it is still a rare occurrence. We don't really have much of those happening in our state locally. However, it is a comfort.
Yeah.
It is a comfort to just know that at least it's on your backpack. And that is something that I'll have to like, really like thank you guys for deciding that, instead of things like pouches. Even if something like that were never to happen and hopefully it never does, having it on your, somewhere that you can easily get it, is, it's still a comfort that it brings to students.
I don't think we have to worry about pouches. That's always an issue. So I think we just need to, if we can focus on the positives, because surprisingly, Nancy was not in favor of this, because I thought that's another mandate, bullvine thing that somebody, it was going to cost us money and we didn't have it, but I'm so thrilled, thank you. I love hearing what you guys are saying. Thank you, Audrey, for telling me that it was not as dismal.
I think just like anything, there's always challenges that we have to work through as a district and, but we're doing a great job.
We're doing it, yeah.
Staff and our, our support staff and our administrative staff, and our students are too. And so I think, I think we're making it, making it work.
It warmed my heart.
Well, great.
Any other questions or comments? No? No? Well, thank you, Andrea.
Our next agenda item is cabinet member updates. Who would like to kick us off?
I will.
Okay, thank you. I'll help kind of lead us through this. So, like walking, our agenda tonight, are circling back to what we discussed during our board retreat. So one was, a variety of us gave updates and opportunities, not only on positions that we have within our own committees, but also some opportunities for our board members to engage in other ways. The first person that's going to share an update about the status of their committee is Francesca on E E A C. And then on deck will be Scott sharing about the budget committee.
Good evening, everyone. Educational Equity Advisory Committee, we currently have one to two seats open for community members. So if you know anybody in the community that would like to join, please have them reach out to me. And we have the opportunity for one student, we picked another one up this week. So we have one student available and that would close out all of our positions. We're currently at a little over twenty-two, so.
What, what grade levels for the students?
High school.
Oh, so any ninth, can I recall?
Do we, do we contact all the students who apply for a student, rep some spots and?
Yes.
Done.
We did, we had, we had our administrative assistant Stephanie Moreno reach out, thank you so much for providing that information and reached out to each of them that asked if they'd like to apply.
Summer, and like we talked about, kids and email, so maybe.
We did, we just did this week.
Yeah.
Yes, and that just occurred actually, a week, a week ago, yeah.
No, thank you.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As I mentioned, it's the retreat, we do have three open positions within the budget committee. There's an application process, you can find it on the, the applications on the website. The requirements are, anyone who must be a registered voter, officers in the facilities that they just care. The ones, it's either three or two, deciding the round, with applications. Certainly will be an interesting time in the budget committee. Good opportunity for someone who's passionate about that. We generally just meet around the budget development process. So there's a meeting in April when the committee comes in. Thank you, budget, that's one topic. So we meet in April and then it comes again together in, in terms of formal, half vote. So those are the two formal meetings to which the budget committee comes together.
We invite them to a couple more meetings in winter. They're always eligible for the class online, and they step out a half hour.
I was more answering, when did they actually like, those two were the two formal.
I don't look at them until November first, so, okay, there you go.
Well, students can't do the budget committee, though. I mean, you can listen and participate, but you will anyway as student board members.
And I guess the eighteen-year-old. Eighteen-year-old student, they can do it, yeah. That'd be registering.
I'm sure, I don't think you're in charge of this at all, if you're in budget, but do you know how you guys are advertising to eighteen-year-olds students?
It's been in hot news, which goes to all students and all families for the last three weeks. So, and it's on our website.
I don't think we think of student positions on the budget committee like we think of student positions on other.
No, yeah. Typically, it's community members.
I think it could just say, they just can't be official members or vote, so, yeah.
I, I will send it out to senior class, I can send it out to the school and have to send out to senior classes in your slide deck. That's a great idea. We can, we can put a situation in that has the eighteen-year-olds voters, so that's definitely a great opportunity for students to learn.
Especially if you have students that are on that financial pathway or something.
I'm next, and then Beth will be on deck around the bond development committee. So, Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, our applications close this Friday. To date, we have seven openings for community members. We've received three community applications, so I'd love to, as always, present a full slate or more to you for voting. So if, love, if you know someone, please encourage them, have them reach out to myself. Rose and Stephanie Moreno have also been gathering applications as well. You'll find those on our advertised through hot news as well. But definitely some opportunity for our community to apply.
It's like a once a month?
Once a month, the first Monday of every month. Half of them are going to be online this year and half in person. Yes. We also have six student reps, we have five returners, five have confirmed they are returning. So we do have one opening, we currently have three student applications for that one spot.
Hey.
So we are doing a great job with our student applications. Again, if we can encourage, if you know anyone who'd be interested in applying for those community member spots, that would be wonderful.
If it stays at three, in the past we have, like expanded student representation and I have to tell two of them no, haven't we done that before?
We have. That would be something I think that we would need to discuss if we'd like to move then from six to eight this upcoming year. If we did move from, I think it was four, to that, to that six, if you remember, three years ago. So I really appreciate that, if we, that might just be something that we might want to review and discuss. And I'll do something as this is a forward-appointed committee that you could consider and think about and be more than happy to share those applications for that committee. Yeah, there's seven total, so we rotate every other year of members serving those two years. We currently then have those seven openings and three have applied, so we still have four spots that we could definitely have some applicants fill.
What is the focus of the conversations we'll be having, just so that we can get them excited?
No, that's great. This year, we do have some C T E and A P I B courses for them to review and to move forth. We don't have a curriculum this year. We did have our math curriculum adoption last year. As we know, we're, we're pausing on that science curriculum adoption for financial reasons. So I think encouragement of, of having that voice around the career and tech ed and A P and I B courses and bringing them forward. The other piece that we folded in last year that we're going to continue to do as well is our C C A C really enjoyed hearing updates about curriculum. So things that they had maybe approved in the past and how are we doing and what is that looking like? So we'll continue to do that as well. So this year, we'll be bringing forth how our social studies curriculum adoption has gone and being implemented in the classrooms, as well as our secondary math implementation started this, this last week. So we'll be bringing forth that as well. So that, I hope, too, would encourage people to just hear the great work that we're doing in the curriculum use and hearing those reports. And we'll do a, some of those courses that they have approved, so how are those new career and technical education courses going, or how are some of those new A P courses or I B courses going within the schools as well?
Hey, so, the bond development committee, the new hottest game in town, self-proclaimed. So we have just sent out invitations to our fall meetings and right now, we have planned to have six of them. We have thirty-seven members on the committee proper, if everyone comes. That includes all three of you student reps who indicated it's the summer retreat that you would like to participate, as well as Yvette and Jessica. And we have, obviously, our co-chairs, Steve Callaway, Erica Lopez.
And we have, obviously, our co-chairs, Steve Callaway, Erica Lopez. We have some additional local business reps, some at-large community representatives, some parent representatives, which include some folks from our EEAC and Latino PAC, Black Village. We have, we had way more staff interest than we could possibly accommodate on the committee, which was really exciting, that people are fired up about it. Reps from Washington County, cities of Hillsborough, North Plains, Cornelius, and our union representatives. And then we have some district support staff, which is four of us here on this side of the table, me, Saida, Scott, Derek, Brooke. And then also, we've invited Wendy Ramos from Student Services to be on that committee, and then Dave Peterson, he's so knowledgeable about our facility needs. And then we have a number of fourteen different outside folks who are members of our long-range planning committee, and also some other outside consultants who have helped us with various bond projects in the past, who are going to serve as technical resources to the committee. So, that'll be great. We, you know, hope that most people can attend in person. There will also be virtual options for every meeting. We'll record those meetings, we'll post them on our bond website, along with our meeting minutes, so that if there are people who didn't make the cut for the committee, or couldn't attend in person, they can still stay abreast of the development process and stay informed about that. And then, after the series of fall meetings, our plan is to go out and have a couple of community meetings to showcase the draft proposal or proposals, if there is more than one at that point, and get community input that way. And then have the Bond Development Committee come back together, review the feedback, refine if needed. And then by April or May, be able to present a final recommendation to the board on first reading, and then vote on that no later than June to solidify our bond package. And then, everything will kind of move forward with the election process from there. The board can regenerate the Political Action Committee and engage in advocacy, and we'll get everything on the ballot, and then the vote would happen in November. So. Calendar Committee. I know you all, I see the smiles on your face and your eyes. Well, we are looking for a board representative, and then also, I'd like to open it up to a student representative to be a part of our planning. And so, the idea would be that we would be bringing forward the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar at the end of the fall year, for first reading in September, at the end of September, and then adoption potentially October, and then start working on the twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar, so that we can start getting that prepared in twenty-six for first reading, so that we would be meeting our goal of having a two-year calendar within this four years. So, if you're interested. Do you have any other questions? Typically, we've had the call from like four-thirty till about five forty-five, six o'clock. They're usually about an hour and fifteen, sometimes an hour and a half. Just been playing out, we're kind of potentially looking at Thursdays, the day early November, have a couple meetings before we go into winter break, and then come back and try to finish up the last night's event. And we'll have folks that have served on the committee who have an understanding, and the new folks that will be joining, and so I think it'll be a good call at twenty-seven.
Nicole, could you speak up, so they can hear you online, so they can hear you over here? Sorry.
Yeah, I would be open to speaking in this committee.
Okay, wonderful.
Finally, a reminder that our Cognia Systems Accreditation is happening in October, and I have two opportunities for three members each to be a part of that. The first one is going to be on October twentieth at ten-thirty to eleven-fifteen. That is when these six accreditors that come from all over our country would love to meet in person with three of our school board members. If you are interested, if you have that time available, again, that's going to be on Monday, October twentieth, and that's from ten-thirty to eleven-fifteen. I'll also have you stay for lunch, which means you get out by noon. So, please let Rose and I know if that works on your calendars. Again, we can have three school board members with our six accreditors sharing great things of HSD and the things that we work so hard to do. So, there's that. And then also related, I shared this at the retreat, we do, we can only have three to come and hear about their report. So, once we go through that system-wide accreditation, and our creditors here from all of us in this room, and go out to our schools, they will come back then on the twenty-third, that's at eleven-thirty in the morning, will be down in the boardroom to hear the report of what they've read on all the information that we've put forth that they're reviewing currently, and then also what they've seen within schools, and then from our interviews. So, if anyone's open up, that's going to be again on the twenty-third, the Thursday, at eleven-thirty. We should get you out by twelve-thirty, one o'clock, and that is to hear their report, and we'll get you out the door. Okay. Again, if you are interested in either of those, please let Rose and myself know, and we'll make sure we get you calendar invites, too. That rounds out, I think, our Cabinet Member Updates. Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to session time. So, we're going to start with our student representatives, and let's start with Gosey.
I was a bit late. I'm hitting, so I apologize. And two, I'd just like to thank all of you guys for being here and being patient, listening to all of us, and
All right. I'm very honored to be here.
Very, yes.
It's such a wonderful opportunity to be here on the school board and see all of you guys, and really see all that you guys are doing for our schools and our districts. I know it's community work, and funding, and all of that, and logistics, but I do see that you guys are putting in the effort, and I can't be more thankful as a student. And just as a personal shout-out, me and my friend Caroline Fergosie have our artwork exhibit next door. I'm very excited. And they are probably up there, and
To add to that, they kind of summed everything up. Thank you all. It's a really fun meeting. Can I, Raymond?
Someone I can see the art exhibit. I just wanted to appreciate all of our staff who got this school year up and running from support services and tech, and our business office, our custodians, our counselors, fixing student schedules, teachers getting classrooms ready, and our administrators welcoming students back. It was a great, positive beginning to the school year. And I know that the budget cuts have been a downer for us as a community, but just to see the vibrancy of students and staff as we start school has been uplifting for me. A theme for me this year is to raise awareness among leaders in our community about the ways that the political situation is impacting us. And we had partners here tonight from Washington County mentioning things in Justice Center, which is something we're lucky to have here in Washington County. I learned organizations like SARC and CARES Northwest, SARC is the Sexual Assault Resource Center, and CARES Northwest is the place that we provide medical care and checkups for students who've experienced abuse. Those organizations, because of elimination of federal grants, are cutting their staff significantly. They're no longer able to provide the supports that they have to our community, including being advocates in court, showing up with families and students who are the victims of abuse. And I feel like as we're of a school system that serves kids and families, it's important for me to raise my voice and say that those things are happening, so that we don't not notice them. I think as the capacity of our community-based organizations goes down, we're going to see hardships experienced by families increase that don't have options, and we as leaders need to speak up and make sure that those organizations can thrive again. Also, I've mentioned this to many of the directors and staff, but the Medicaid cuts are hitting stations like Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Clinic hard, and those organizations which have traditionally provided health care to a huge number of our community members are making cuts as well. And so, it matters what's happening at the federal and state level. By the time I have the opportunity to use my voice, I'm going to highlight not only what's happening that impacts the school system, but adjacent organizations that serve our kids and community. And invite them to join me. Thank you.
To our board, start off with Jessica.
Well, Jim and Tammy are not here to hear me say thank you to their presentation. I feel like I'm really excited about a lot of the possibilities that can come our way if this, if they pass. A long time ago, back when I worked at PCC, I used to support women in domestic violence, and just wanted to share, you know, we're entering that time of the year where the sun goes kind of away, depression kicks in, but then also financial hardships because of the holidays and just that time of the year. And we tend to see a spike in domestic violence and child abuse cases, and so, to hear, you know, that there, and I think that's just such a huge thing, and so I wanted to share that. And I also heard Jim say, you know, please invite us back to learn more about this, and I hope we can take him up on that, because I think there's so many opportunities, and a lot of what he said that, of course, benefit all of our students and families. So, yeah, I wanted to say that, and then also, just thank you for the kickoff. I feel like my, I was just telling Katie that my oldest, who didn't sound excited about high school, he's actually coming home happy, so he won't share the details, but it sounds like things are going really great. And I've been seeing principals out there high-fiving, waving parents, and I just felt really welcome for the start of the school year, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll just echo what Jessica said about, welcome back to school, everyone. I've been reading my hot news. I've been communicating with Audrey, and I was really happy to see that all of the school principals included the AJB calendar on the high school students in their newsletters. And I was, I mean, maybe I had a hand in that, but I'll call it a win either way, because, you know, we've got all these things on our fridge now, and I'm just really excited about all this new stuff happening for the beginning of the school year. For Nicole?
I did look up the reception, the artist reception is going to be from five to eight PM. So, thank you for mentioning the date, because I could go right to it on the library's website. That is the same date as our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration for HSD, but you can either go to the artist reception and then the HSD reception, or you can go to the HSD one and then the artist reception. I mean, the possibilities are right there in front of us, so I'll definitely be putting it on my calendar. Thank you. That's it.
October 2nd?
October 2nd. It's a Thursday.
It's also the same date on the Senator Solomon, Senator Reynolds, and Rep. Senator Watanabe are having the town hall as well.
It'll be a whole evening, everything's happening on the 2nd.
Yeah. Thanks, good to be back, everybody. First time not being in a science seat in four years, so that's kind of fun. I think we are, I don't know, you know, standardized testing is not a super popular thing overall. Nave test is probably about as good, so I think we've all seen, regarding achievement levels for our high scores in America, and it's not, I continue to say, you know, people in this room are very good at their jobs, and I continue to challenge you competitively how we rise up in the moment. I think things are changing, I think the moments are changing. I recently heard a college professor say that you can't even assign a book to read to a student now, but not in a lamenting way, that it's different, that the way we are learning now is different, and that, you know, everything old is new again, and maybe it's an oral tradition, where people listen to stories instead of reading them. But, you're still, the themes and lessons learned in Hamlet are the same, no matter how you ingest that information. He's a humanities professor, so the way people are learning is changing, and I hope we are ready to rise up and meet that moment. Thank you for the updates regarding the situation with Hillsborough Online Academy. I will say, as someone who's very proudly wears their HOA Charger shirt around town, the sort of upheaval geographically and whatnot, that that, and leadership-wise, that that program has experienced since they're a long time ahead of their program retired. I know we value that program tremendously, and I sometimes don't feel like we're showing them the love that they deserve. Nice job of Travis being on the TV, and thanks for the shout-out to the board. He mentioned us. If you haven't had a chance to watch that clip, Travis was on the K2 TV show, and he mentioned that we have a high-functioning board, or supportive board, or something like that, so, you know. Shout-out, and way to represent the district on TV. Thank you. Last thing, this is very off-topic and whatever, but, and no action items, just a piece of information. Many of you know, like, I had a, well, technical term vestibular event this spring. Some of that's still lingering. Severely impacted for a while, like, veteran for a little while, but things are better, whatever. But also, just a heads-up, that next week is vestibular awareness week. So, next week, think about your ear health, the health of your inner ear canal.
Interesting. Thank you, Mark. Nancy?
I'm thinking of my inner ear, no. I just wanted to let everybody know that this weekend, for our students, first of all, when we say OSBA, we mean the Oregon School Board Association, so just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I live in the land of acronyms, so sharing that one. This weekend, the Board of Directors will be meeting, and Timberline Lodge will be up at Mount Hood, and we've got lots to do. I did receive a call from the current president, Board President, and they have announced that they will be nominating me for Vice President, that will be a three-year commitment, as I matriculate on to the leadership of the organization itself, as the Vice President. And the reason, they shared that the reason why they're nominating me for this particular position is because I will be leading the Legislative Policy Committee. So, that moves me to Chief Cat Herder, which is what I do pretty much on my day job as well, and I'll be looking to Rose for guidance on being the Chief Cat Herder, and there's nobody that hurts cats, so. But I just want to let you guys know that that's happening. I will come back and report if I should be elected, and what we do from moving forward. Lots of things happening with OSBA right now, as we're navigating how we advocate on behalf of the schools from a funding perspective, which is absolutely our focus at this time. So, I will continue to bring those updates to you all and share those, and if there's anything you need me to know, the same as well. And just overall, just remember that the current situation with the budget for the state is really, really not exclusive to schools. Please understand that it is not. There are significant impacts to many, many critical agencies that are members of the state of Oregon government. And the one that I work with is just one of them. And we are feeling it, so just keep that in mind. And as usual, there's not a levy or bond that shouldn't be passed at this point, because we need the sheriff to get the money that they need, we need the libraries to have the money that they need, and we need the money that we need. So, if it means more taxes, then so be it. I don't think those will ever go down. So, there we are. Thanks.
Thank you, Matthew. Congratulations. Oh, Patrick. I, online? My apologies.
No worries. Good to be with everyone virtually today. It's, and some of you know I don't live too far away from Witch Hazel and South Meadows, so it's been lovely to be the time of year where you start hearing kids walking to and from a school. It's such a delightful time of year. Albert Camus said, "Every" Albert Camus said, "Every autumn is like a second spring, or every leaf is a flower." And as we get into this autumn season, I'm always looking for opportunities to enjoy it. It's one of my favorite seasons, and so it's just something to celebrate, the turn of the year, and all the good things that are happening in our schools with our teachers. So, thanks to everyone for the good start to the year, and looking forward to a great year ahead of us.
Thank you, Patrick. Chan?
Well, happy new school year, everyone. I'm super happy to be on this side of this last month. It has, for personal reasons, it has been a very physically limiting and very challenging month of recovery for me after having some medical emergencies, so super happy to be here. I am so sad to have missed the board retreat, which is where, you know, we get to really connect, and that was on the heel of the OSBA Summer Conference, which was amazing to have our entire board represented there, and, you know, getting to know our two new board members. So, summer was a, that summer board conference was a wonderful time, and then my film just, like, cut off until now. So, anyway, happy to be back, looking forward to a healthier and more positive school year ahead. And yeah, just thank you for the updates today, and all of the behind-the-scenes work that our staff, our administrators, our cabinet, Travis. Yeah, just thank you for your incredible work, looking forward to a great school year.
Thank you, Chan.
I just want to ask all the words of my fellow board members, happy new school year. It was fun to see students waiting for the bus on my morning walk. I did say hi. They were all with their parents, like, on like the first or second day. And then today, I got to wear my business hat on, and ran into Principal Walters, and she's like, she's doing the pickup line, doing a great job. This year, and I was like, that's fantastic. The student is in kindergarten, and her favorite thing is that there's no nap time, and she's having a wonderful time. So, update on a kindergarten student. And then, I also wanted to sort of mention something that Mark had said earlier about board members connecting outside with other elected officials in, you know, in their entities. I have been in contact with Chrissy Kotke for a couple weeks now, had a meeting with her, and the team members from Representative McLean's office, Senator Solomon, possibly Congresswoman Amici, whoever, to do a walkthrough through our districts here in Hillsborough, Porch Grove, Banks, and just give them an opportunity to all come together as one to see what is happening in our schools, and that's something that will be led by the administrative team if it happens, and it will possibly happen fairly quickly. And the idea is for them to hear a sort of cohesive landscape and see what is happening within our districts. And then after that meeting, to have a second meeting where we all come together to discuss what they saw, what is positive, what needs work on a more, you know, advocacy level. So, watch out for those regarding that. So, hopefully, it does come to fruition, then have conversations have been had, and so hopefully, the next step is having time where we can, all four of them can meet with. Yeah, and then, other than that, I think, I don't think anything else. And so, with that, I adjourn this meeting at seven-thirty.